Okay, I'll make a motion that we open the meeting at 5:40.
So make one.
What's that?
I said, so make one.
I did make a motion. Wise, wise, wise dear here.
I'll second it.
All right, polling the members, Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Darlene.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, motion carries. So we're open for business. Let's see, as far as the chairman's additions, what I, what I wanted to talk about is the trying to expand the age restricted housing by law to allow smaller lots in the downtown commercial and surrounding district.
Well, you are, that's already on the work session, so it's not, you don't have to addition.
Oh, okay.
3.2 amendments on age restricted development.
Okay, good.
Now, Sedan was here, this is pretty good.
All right, so let's, let's check out the minutes.
Yeah.
Has anybody had a chance to?
I've, I've read them all.
All right.
The, um, the minute, well, you want just do one, just do one at a time?
Sure.
Minutes for December, December 8th. I read that and I think I've sent comments back to Beth, I don't know if anybody else has. Beth, you incorporated all the changes that I recommended, right?
I did, yeah. It's all track changes too.
I made some suggested changes on that one too.
You did, thank you, and those were incorporated.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for December 8th, 2021.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, okay.
The other, the next one, I do have an additional copy, this is for January 12th.
Yeah.
And I know I made comments on it, if anybody else did, but Beth, if you go down to the third page, and this is why I missed, paragraph 2.2.
Okay. Um, I'm there.
Second full, second full paragraph begins with the word present cadence Agastrom. The second line, it says Alice, Alyssa Struthers and Michael, there should be a space between Anne and Michael.
Thank you, I can do that right now.
Yep, that's why I didn't email to you, because I just confused it. Other than that, I'm good.
And bold as well, I don't know why I had it in bold.
I, that's creative, creative license on your part, I don't really care about that guy's stuff.
The drum roll, hang on.
All right, is there a motion to approve the January 12th meeting minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, approve January 12th, 2022 minutes.
Second.
Uh, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, motion carries, okay.
Second, Sean Pearson, I'm sorry.
Yes, Sean, Sean second, yeah.
Yes.
And Bill, the minutes for February 12th, February 2nd, I wasn't there, I did review it for, just for clarity and, and you know, flow, and I made some suggestions, but I don't know substantively, so I can't comment on that, nor I, nor will I vote.
I think that, I mean, it, it's pretty exhaustive in terms of covering what we talked about.
It's, 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 it's long.
For both.
I was gonna say for both, but I didn't want to go there. But it's, it, it gave me an idea of what you guys were talking about, you know?
Yeah, I think it's fine. Yeah.
So somebody else will have to motion that one, I'll just, I'm gonna have to recuse.
I make a motion to accept the notes from February 2nd.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Okay, Chanel.
I, I have to accuse.
Oh, that's right, Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Dave finally was present on that meeting, he was acting as a full member, according to the notes.
Dave, do you want to to vote on this one?
Yep, if I was present as a member, then yes.
Yep. Yep, that's what it is for, for the purposes of these minutes here.
Okay.
And although yes, okay, the motion carries, so that's good, the minutes. So with regard to that that conversation, well, one of the things we talked about was simply adding dog grooming establishment to the special permitted uses in the residential zone in that, in that section there, B9. And then I went to the planning board and they were saying, well, you know, what about, what did they say? Dog training, dog daycare. So I'd like to have the board make a few comments about that, what time we're?
It's, it's time to start the continued meeting at this point.
It is? Okay, all right, we'll hold that for later. Thanks.
All right. So I'll make a motion that we, we reopen the continued hearing of Candace Agastrom for special permit.
Second.
Okay, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, okay, so the continuation of the Agastrom hearing is then with us. So where were we at now in terms of this continuation?
The conversation we were just having about the planning board, I think it's germane to this, this application since, since you took the steps to try to amend the bylaws to, to include dog grooming in the bylaw section. So, and I wasn't at that meeting, so if you want to kind of give a summary of that.
Yeah, basically, section B9 of the the bylaw, I just knocked the thing down. Okay. Gives it this, that's in the special permitted uses in the residential zone and so we had talked about it on the second as, as just adding dog grooming establishment to the, to the possible uses. And then in talking with the planning board, when that was earlier this week, no, I think it was last week. But anyway, they, they indicated maybe we should add dog training and dog daycare to the, to the bylaw.
Wouldn't those two kind of fall into kennel?
Uh, the daycare might, um, the training, yeah, I could see, because a lot of places do kennel and training.
Bill, can you tell me what the section is that you talked, that you were referring, referring to?
Hang on. If you look in those draft minutes.
I was just looking at the code sections of the, for the hearing, but let me go back to the minutes then.
Yeah, 145, 46.
145, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
And then it's item B9 is the, B must be the special permitted uses. The way, the way it's laid out in that new codification is, it's hard to find the, the, the border between the as of right uses and the special permitted uses.
But I think for clarity purposes, going, you know, forward since we, you know, we were debating, well, dog grooming is kind of like a kennel, it's kind of, and we felt like we needed to pull that out as, be specific about it. We probably should be specific about dog training and, and daycare, dog daycare as well, just to keep, make it clear, which was the intent. Now, because it's special perm, it's a special permit, that means they'll be, it's not like you can just go out and everybody can have daycare, but they'd have to go through a process to get the special permit and make sure the property is appropriate for the activity.
Right.
Yeah.
No, and it gives the abutters a chance to, to respond to the, to the process too. I mean, I, I don't, I think it's better to have uses like this in the special permit wrapper.
What happened with the planning board? They, they, they took the, the draft that you guys created and they said, add more to it?
Yeah, they said add more to it and, and they're working on, I forget what they're, they're working on something too and so they're, they scheduled a hearing, you know, the planning board has to have a hearing on any zoning amendments.
Yep.
Um, so they scheduled a hearing for April something or other, I forget.
11.
April 11th. I wrote it down, so, uh, so yeah, so we have, uh, we have until then, well, it has to be advertised, but we have a, we have at least another week to to finalize the wording on that.
So who has the draft of that, Bill? Is that something you created?
Yeah. Beth has a copy of it.
It's, it's in the, it's in the information that's in our packet tonight. Really, all we did was add dog grooming establishment. Commercial kennel comma, adding dog grooming establishment comma, and that just fits in what's already there.
Can I offer a comment?
Who's that?
Uh, Mike Crowley.
Mike.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, um, just because it sounds like you're trying to expand uses to future uses, the other two allowed uses are not pet specific, well, they're specific to pets, but they're not specific to dogs as opposed to say cats. And so it might be worthwhile if you're considering a more expansive allowed use under this to, instead of having it be dog grooming, have it be pet grooming. Because I don't know if cat, if cat grooming is a thing, but it could theoretically be.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just an observation, and hearing you guys talk about it, where you're trying to get at, I'm like, okay, well, then maybe this might be worth offering up, just for consideration.
No, it's a good point, and maybe peacock grooming too might come, come down the road.
I don't want alligator grooming, you know?
If we could get close enough to them.
Horse grooming.
Yeah.
I have a horse, I mean, that's a big animal to be bringing into a residential neighborhood, so I, I would probably limited to small animals, I would be, yeah, I wouldn't want my horse in the neighborhood.
Now, just to let you know that when you, the problem, when you start defining something to, to a specific use, it gets more and more verbose, to use the word, and, um, you know, so if you just, if you just said dogs, and that limits it to dog. If you say pet, then you say, okay, what about the, as Beth says, what about the dog, the horse that comes in and has his hooves groomed? Or whatever, you gotta be, if you're gonna get to that level, then you're gonna have to be very, very, very specific, or else people will take advantage of it. Similar to like, similar to like, um, support animals, and we have, the reason why I use the peacock, we have had that in my office, we have to justify a peacock as a, as a support animal. It's difficult.
Yes, how about domestic animal grooming?
Um, companion animal?
Commercial kennel, it doesn't say what kind of animal. And then animal or veterinary hospital.
Well, I mean, typically with horses, the blacksmith or the whoever travels to see the horse rather than vice versa. Not too worried about being bitten by that one.
Yeah, I take, I take Mike's suggestion to heart, but I still think maybe limit it to, to a dog grooming, might, might keep yourselves from have, be opening up Pandora's box.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I see what you mean.
All right.
Yeah, it seems like leaving it at dog, dog, daycare.
Well, if you don't, then you're gonna have to define what kind of pet you're talking about, limit by size, weight, you know, all that stuff. I mean, you could get a 200 pound Great Dane, I suppose, but it's still a dog theoretically. So. Is that the only thing they wanted you to do, Bill?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
We, we booked a spot for it on the town meeting warrant.
Okay.
So what's the next step on that, Bill? So is, do we, do we vote here in the, in the ZBA in the, in the working session? On the wording, or what's the next step?
Yeah, I guess, I guess we'll have to, well, it's not that complicated, so somebody could just repeat the wording and Beth will write it down and we'll vote on it.
It doesn't, it doesn't even, I don't even think it requires a vote, it could, I mean, it could be submitted by you as an, as a prior person to the planning board, planning board is the gatekeeper of that stuff, so.
I know, the planning board seems to want votes, so.
They want it, they want it coming from a, from an entity or a board?
Yeah, so let's, let's use the silver platter approach.
Now, is that something we do here, while this, the hearing for this applicant is going on, or should we do it later?
Hold that for the work session.
The work session. I just said it was a gem.
Between these two hearings, so, so I don't know what else there is to be said for the original hearing at this point.
Other than to tell Candace that what you guys have done, I know, I was at the last meeting, but you did follow through with what was promised, that you would bring it to the planning board and take the steps necessary to get it on the town floor, which it's, that's in the process, so maybe just talk to the process of a town meeting and then the AG's certification of the, uh, of the warrant after that might be, give her an idea of what's gonna happen.
Yeah. Well, it, it's, um, with regard to the town meeting process on a zoning amendment, most of them, they changed a few, few, but most of them require two thirds vote of town meeting. And, um, I don't expect to have any trouble getting this one through a town meeting. So, and then what, if the, if the town approves it, then uh, it gets sent to the attorney general, the whole town meeting warrant and the votes and like that, and and the attorney general's people are supposed to go through it and, and make sure that we didn't break any laws in the process of changing our, our zoning or, or whatever else we did at town meeting. And typically, they're very hands off. The, uh, I mean, we, we, we've had some obviously specious zoning bylaw amendments that the attorney general didn't, didn't bat an eyelash and proved them, so I don't expect to have any problems with that part of it.
But sometimes they return, but the ones, the one that they had with, where, I think it was John Page, was the chair of a, I don't know if it was, if it was a, it was just a re, a review of some, of certain bylaw sections, that, that was last spring and they're still waiting for that.
Oh, wow.
Because that was, that was controversial, it involved a few people that might have taken steps to minimize the, or negate the, the, the applications to the AG's office, but it's still in, that's still in the process. But most times, they come back within two to four months, maybe Mike can speak to that, but that's my, that's my, that's my experience.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's ever been longer than four months, but, but you say that there's one in the, still in the process, huh?
Yeah, it's kind of like a modernization of, of job descriptions for town, town administrator and a couple other things that create a lot of heat and that was, that was past the town meeting and that was, and that was submitted, I think it's been submitted three times now because of errors in the submitted package.
Oh, that's right, you're talking about the charter then.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I understand that people have been trying to sabotage that particular puppy, so.
Yeah, I wasn't, I didn't come out and say that exactly.
Yeah.
There was some, there's some issues with that.
Yes, right. I can't imagine how I made that mistake.
Okay, so, so how does this, so with this particular hearing, where it's on the original request under, how do we manage, do we close that hearing, do we put it on hold, what, what's the next? Because we have the follow on hearing as well that's related.
Just kind of suspend it until we do the new application, and once we decide on the new application, then we go back to this.
Yeah, it would have been, I think it would have been better to have the new application before, in, in the lead and tonight as opposed to the latter. But I suspect what we could do on this one is we can continue it for a period of 35 minutes, because we can't have two meetings over at the same time. So continue it till, you know, I don't know, 7:30 or whatever the, whatever the date, what's, what's the time of the other one? 6:45, so you can, so you can, you can continue it to 6:16 and, and which is a minute after the other one's supposed to open, and then just don't open until the other one's concluded, then you can make a decision then.
All right, is there a motion to do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we continue this to later this evening at 6:16 PM.
Second.
Polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, okay. All right, so now we have, we got 15 minutes before the next.
Yeah. Do you understand why we did that, Candace?
She's muted.
Just that we can't, we you might not be able to, David, can you unmute her? So, so it may, you know, we can't, if we decide now on this application, the original one, it's probably gonna lose because it's not in, in the defined special permitted actions, right, so we're holding that off. And then we're gonna rule on your other one that, that's gonna be in, in another 15 minutes. And then when that one's done, then we'll come back to this one, and then if, if, if the, if the second one is approved, then you can withdraw this one.
I really have no idea what you're talking about, but okay. I thought I was coming back in looking for a kennel license with access.
That's the one at 6, at 6:15.
Okay.
Yeah, so technically you have two applications before us, one is for dog grooming and one is for kennel.
But I thought we withdrew without prejudice, the dog grooming.
We didn't, we can't do that, and you don't want to withdraw it until we, until we decide on the dog, um, the kennel one, once we decide on that, then we'll do the, um, yeah, it, it's just, it's just the way you have to do it.
We, we talked about you withdrawing it with, without prejudice, but, but you didn't do that.
I did.
Oh, Beth told me she didn't, because I asked as, as late as this afternoon.
Candace, I have, yeah, there's, I'm sorry, through the chair, there is no record of your withdrawal.
That's why I came into the office to do whatever I needed to do that day, I thought.
You, I don't know if you recall, but you took the letter home with you and you didn't leave it with the office, so we didn't have a letter from you in our, in the office. We had a new application that you delivered. But there was no letter withdrawal.
It has to be in writing.
It has to be a signed letter of withdrawal.
That's, that's why we went forward today, because we didn't have a withdrawal.
Well, that was my intention to do that, I.
All right, we're, 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 we are where we are right now and it's gonna work out fine, so.
Okay.
So, let's see, so we have like almost 15 minutes, well. So the, I'd like to spend the time to do some of that work session and, uh, talking about the age restricted housing in the downtown commercial.
Okay.
Uh, if, if you guys are amenable. It was interesting, because I, I spoke to the building inspector about this too and you know, one of our, one of our issues in town is that all of our development is in the aquifer. And what we really should be doing is trying to develop the RB, the non-aquifer parts of town. And, um, but the downtown, of course, we, there's nothing we can do about that. We're not gonna move it again. Back up to Meeting House Hill. But, uh, you know, and, and we were talking about the bylaw in general and the requirement for town water is another issue that I have, because when you go out into the RB, you find less and less town water and I mean, as long as a person has water, which, I mean, if you want to build a house and you're not on town water, you have to, you have to dig a well or drill a well or whatever. I mean, if a person has water, this, it shouldn't matter what the source is. And I may be getting into trouble politically with the water department here, but, but, uh, from, from what I've read, we don't have a lot of excess water to go around, so if we did some age restricted development out in the hinterlands, as it were, it, it would not be a, an additional drain on town water, but anyway, that's a, that's one, one subject, but in terms of the downtown, I got the map, Michael sent me the the map of the water mains and the downtown is pretty well covered. I was surprised. Yeah, so we could do the downtown commercial district and the, but the other issue is we should probably look at some assessor's maps and see if we can pick some parcels that make sense to include. I don't know if we can include them in the downtown commercial district, or whether we should just say, here's, here's a list of parcels. We, you know, we'll, we'll entertain projects in the downtown commercial district, but here's a list of parcels that are also eligible.
Are you talking about changing the, the, um, the classification of certain parcels of land in town?
Yeah.
So, so in, in other words, you want to do some spot zoning, is?
Well, no, it wouldn't necessarily be considered spot zoning, I mean, if you had one parcel, that would be spot zoning, but if you had a list of parcels, I don't, I don't see.
But if the list were contiguous, but if they're separate lists from all over the town?
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about going that far away. The idea is to try to get a little more housing in the downtown area.
Okay.
You're not creating a new zone either, you're just creating what's allowed in a particular zone, or maybe so many, so many feet away from that zone.
Yeah, well, you could use a radius or something from the.
Yeah, until we really looked at some maps to see what properties would be applicable to it, you don't know how to word it.
Right.
Okay.
But the, um, the idea is, um, you know, lower the, the minimum lot size in that area to one acre and you know, allow, I don't know what the Board of Health, I think.
One acre?
Yeah.
You don't have a lot of properties that are one acre in downtown.
Really?
Yeah, that's why, I mean, you're lucky to see a half acre for a lot of them.
Yeah, that, the, the application we have later this evening is, I think is .55.
They're, they're all small, and in the downtown commercial district, I believe, oh God, I haven't looked at the chart in a while, I believe, um, the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet versus our, our A and our RB, which is two and three acres.
Right.
Our A is three and our B is two.
Okay, well, that's why we're having this meeting, because, you know, I'd like to get this right and.
Our minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet.
Yeah. So you could go with that and, and I think the thing to do is to talk to the Board of Health and find out how many bedrooms per acre they could support. And that would be a. And that would be a lot clearer than, you know, what they've done so far. And they've got these townhouses or duplexes with some, you know, some number of bedrooms.
Well, I think that depends on. So if you let's just let's just assume everybody has town water. That takes the well radius situation out of the equation.
Right.
Town water. So that means your structure, your lot coverage, you know, in your septic system has to fit on the lot. So it would just depend if you can fit it.
Right.
That's how many bedrooms.
Right, okay.
It would self regulate based on your lot size and what you could fit.
Well, that's what's gonna happen. I mean, you know, somebody comes in with a project like this one we're we're talking about later, you know. It's up to the Board of Health whether, you know, they think that the or the the septic design will support the number of bedrooms involved. And that's the bottom line for.
That's like ten bedrooms.
Pardon?
That's like ten bedrooms and a half an acre. Right? If one of the later tonight.
So that's yeah, well, I I mean, I don't, you know, we don't know the answer to that yet.
No.
That's because the septic design hasn't been done.
Yeah. And then with along with the septic, so so you fit the septic system, but then the Board of Health wants a reserve area. So you can only get so much with what you have. I think I'm a hair under. I think I have point four nine acres. My four bedroom septic takes up a lot of space and then I have reserved. So I don't know how much bigger, you know, with your setbacks, the shape of the lot. I don't I don't think you're getting that big.
What is what is the reserve? Is that if it ever fails?
Yes.
Yeah.
You need a backup plan, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's we get the raised septic and that kind of.
Well, no, the raised septic is because of high groundwater.
Oh, okay.
So but the reserve area is like if the if the system fails. In the case of the downtown commercial, it's all sand. So the chances of a system failing there.
I would say instead of talking to the Board of Health with that particular, maybe we bring in a septic installer because they've got the measurements down. They know how much you can fit, how many pipes you need per how many bedrooms and what the size of that leach field is and everything. That might help us know what size lot would give you what you what you're looking for.
Okay. All right. I can do that.
But it might be a little bit of everything. This. So the more we talk about this, the more research it sounds like we have to do. To get it, to get it right. I appreciate what was passed and what was done, but it's it 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 can't be used. It's.
Well, that's another interesting point from the building inspector is that that three different people have come in to talk to him about building something under that bylaw. So so I I was kind of amazed. Nothing had happened yet, but I guess people are talking about it. So we don't know what's going to happen, of course, but.
This is Mike Crowley again. Can I offer a point of information that's relevant?
Sure.
I happened to recently ask the Board of Health what how many what's the maximum number of bedrooms an area can hold, an acre can hold. And there is no specific guidance in terms of that measurement. So you can definitely reach out to them. But I it just so happened I literally asked that question last week about how many bedrooms you can put bedrooms, can you put on an acre on a septic and get away with it? And they're like, that's just that's not a conversation that that has been outlined yet. So definitely worth following up, but I'm that's part of the answer you're going to get.
Yeah, that's weird. I would think they would know that one off the top of their heads.
The engineer, the the septic engineer figures that out and designer, and then they just approve it. Okay, great. It fits all their criteria. So they approve it.
Yeah.
But but don't we know like if it's like a in-law apartment that how much the septic has to be upgraded to?
Yeah, but they're they're already working with a septic design and in those cases. So so they know how many bedrooms the you know, the existing system can handle. And if they made that one guy dig up his tank and put in a double double chambered tank, you know.
Yeah.
Even though his original system was sized for four bedrooms and he was he was, I think he dropped to three and he was going back to four. I can't remember, but it's a lot of things to be done.
But Sean, when those things come to us, we don't. We always defer to the Board of Health for that kind of things. We if we even on the one later today, even if we grant the special permit, it's subject to the Board of Health and every other board that has to do their thing.
No, but I was saying what the Board of Health doesn't know, but they know if it's like a in-law apartment, what it has to be upgraded to. So that's what I was kind of confused about.
You know, they have an idea of and again, I'm sorry, this is if I should step back, but I'm just kind of continuing the information that I was giving earlier. There are a lot of very specific situations about what the septic tank is and what the ground is that kind of more dominant than saying this is what you can do in an acre because there's no like optimal space that you can define what an acre can handle. So it's not that they don't have any information. It's that there is no like specific thing that you can codify.
Because there there are too many variables. Like I had mentioned earlier, there's just too many variables and God forbid you get any wetlands on there, then that changes everything too.
Okay, Bill, we're up. We're up to the.
Yes, we're we're up. Is there a motion to open the the six fifteen hearing about the dog kennel?
Yeah, so move.
Uh, second.
All your members Darlene.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
And although yes, okay, so we're open for business and can you read the notice?
Can do.
Thanks, David.
Coats with Mass Generalist Chapter forty eight in the Townsend zoning bylaws, the Townsend zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on Wednesday, February twenty third, twenty twenty two at six fifteen P M on the application of Candace Hagerstrom for a special permit under zoning bylaws, section one forty five hyphen twenty six B nine residential A and B special permit uses pursuant to one forty five sixty five special permit. The applicant and property owner proposes construct and operate a commercial kennel in residence in the existing single family home of four seventy eight Main Street, accessible amount of eleven, block one, lot zero, public remote only access to the meeting is via the link. Cards of this application are available for review in the office of the Town Clerk and Zoning Board of Appeals Office during business hours by emailing a request for a digital copy to B fax and at Townsend M A dot gov. William Cattigan, Chairman.
Okay.
How'd I do?
Excellent. Okay, let me get back to her. Public hearing. Six fifteen. All right. So let's see. There's one one document here that's labeled Historic District Commission Decision, but it's actually the application for the
Right.
Certificate of appropriateness. Have they made a decision on that, Miss Miss Hagerstrom?
You muted. You muted Candace.
Muted.
Dave, can you?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they did not grant me my certificate of appropriateness.
Well, why not, I wonder?
Because it's a full glass door, not a half glass door. A little frustrating seeing that the building permit was given to do it. It was never brought up back then. And they're strongly suggesting that I change the door.
Yeah, Bill, if you look at the I didn't notice it till just now. If you look at the application on the bottom left, on bottom right, it says decision reason. No certificate will be issued. The work done was not approved as appropriate by majority vote at the commission. Certificate denied. And it's got all the signatures on it.
Can I speak?
It's not open for public discussion yet. Unless, Lisa, you are the are you the historic issue?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Elisa.
We we didn't, Candace, we didn't approve a certificate for you. But we had to act on your application. So that's what we did. You held the valid work permit. So you did your work. We can't tell you to undo that. You had a valid work permit, a building permit. We could suggest what would fit into the neighborhood. And for all the change that actually happened there, the only thing the commission thought was that maybe just a little different door.
What if I just added a grid to the door? Like the fire department down the street has. It's the same door. It just has grid. Would that be more appropriate?
It would be more appropriate. Like I said, it we could only make suggestions to you.
Right.
And ask. So it's really.
I wish this was brought to my attention when I originally.
I know. I I know.
I feel bad. I'm in a position where to tear out a whole door and door frame is going to be more work. And I didn't even pick out the door. The contractor did.
Yes, I understand, Candace. We totally understand how this all went down. We just couldn't say, yeah, we approve it because it wasn't right for the district. But we just that's just going on file. And and what we could do is ask you if sometime in the future, sometime down the road, maybe put a different door in. We didn't say you had to do it right now or tomorrow night. In fact, we didn't say you even have to. We just asked.
Right.
Just it so.
Well, I mean, everything I do is look at everybody's door when I drive up and down the street.
Yeah.
What I would suggest is, excuse me, everybody, time timeout, everybody. What I would suggest was to share this is this discussion is not relevant to our meeting.
I agree.
Deal with that directly themselves.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
As far as going down to the town hall that day, I remember Beth had given me a template. I wrote something equivalent, brought it down. I think a little bit of the wording was wrong. I I remember we were discussing whether or not I just cross it off and signature it and leave it. Or if I was going to reprint it, I can't imagine I wouldn't have gone home right away and reprinted it. I just. So if I did, I guess I dropped the ball on that one. Right. It's thought that it was done.
All right. It sounds like you'll be able to work that out. With regard to this hearing, we have we have a mandatory referrals. And let's see, the it starts with the Historic District Commission, so. I I don't think we it's we've covered that. The Board of Health has something to say about the the kennel part of the thing. Although the applicant has met with the Board of Health to discuss the grooming portion of this proposal, the applicant has not discussed a commercial kenneli at the property. The Board of Health needs additional information from the applicant in order to determine if the septic system is adequate for the proposed use or if the use presents any other concerns from a Board of Health perspective. And there's a bunch of questions that they ask. How many dogs? How do you intend to clean the kennel space? Would the kennel have any floor drains? And if so, where would the applicant propose to charge these two? Would the applicant be offering overnight boarding? Or how do they plan to utilize the kennel? How many employees would the kennel have? Would all employees reside on the property? How does the applicant intend to deal with any potential nuisance issues, noise slash odor? Once the above questions are answered, the Board of Health can determine if the septic serving the property is adequate and also decide if the proposed use presents other Board of Health related concerns. The planning board, Mr. McNally, as the chairman said, he supports your application. Conservation Commission says it's not jurisdictional for Conservation Commission. All right, anything else to be said now for we've got the we there was some.
It was one from the Townsend Housing Authority bill as well.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of.
Did you? Did you mention that one?
No, I didn't see that.
Yeah, which is at the February tenth meeting of the Townsend Housing Authority, it was voted that the T H A has no comment on this project.
Okay. I did see that. I did see that when I was reading this stuff. All right.
The rest of you got.
Let's see, there was in a butter comment. Oh, yeah, George Sullivan apparently owns the house next door and is concerned about if it's a dog kennel, it would it might become a detriment to to our rental property. So he's written a letter to that effect.
Okay.
And his is four eighty two and forty two R. So we're slightly further west. All right. Let me go back here. So at this point, the the do the board members have any questions?
What happens with the health department questions?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that.
If if we grant it, does that mean she still has to go through the health department and make sure all their checks and balances are done before anything can be done?
Um, yeah, I think that's the case. But if you're only going to be putting up one dog, I I can't imagine it's gonna be a huge impact.
But Bill, I think if we would have to.
Interior as well. There'll be nothing exterior.
But that the septic and the floor drain and that kind of stuff, wouldn't that still come in? I I don't feel comfortable if the health department isn't on board with it.
Well, we always like you said, we always defer to them. We always defer. We always defer to them. But the thing is, if I if we issue a special permit, we could condition it that only one dog at a time is is being treated, which is what Candace wants to do anyways. So that would limit. I mean, I guess if if it was only one dog and the Board of Health wouldn't have a problem with with septic drain and feces and cleanup and all that, all the drain in the floor and all that stuff, it would be limited to one dog being serviced at a time. I think that's the way to get around it.
So I might might say one to three, something like that. Yeah, just in case a customer brings in two dogs or something at a time.
The other thing too is this isn't going to be an overnight accommodations. It's going to be during certain hours.
But even darling, if you had a lot of, even if you had a few dogs that were staying like it was doggy daycare, they still would have a you would still need a waste management program like we had on you know, remember, we did that one a few years back. You still need a waste management program. But if she only has one dog.
Can I ask Candace a question? Because I so Candace, did you? I think you worked with the Board of Health before when you were going under a dog grooming. Is that correct?
Yeah, I got their approval finally.
Okay, so you got the approval for the dog when we were looking at this as a dog grooming business. So they didn't have a problem. Yeah.
My dog grooming tub, I got the approval to run a sewer line to my shop.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I think I think this this sounds resolvable to me.
I just don't understand why they're even questioning it then. If if they already knew. You know, they already approved it the way it was. Why are they questioning it now?
Well, because they're applying as a kennel at that time.
The application for a kennel, which is a whole other. Now, it's the grooming is incorporated within the kennel, but the kennel is not incorporated within the grooming. Yeah, a dog dog kennel, it opens yourself up to a whole sort of state regulations, waste management, all that stuff.
Right.
So how do I even go around that? I mean, should I just? I'm confused.
Well, that's why I was suggesting one one dog, you know, our permit allows for one one dog being serviced at a time.
Right.
I would say two, like.
Oh, yeah, one or two, whatever. But that's but the premise is that.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you got small dogs, you can't have just one.
Yeah. Yeah.
I instead have a few dogs, but they only come and stay for an hour to two hours, so it's not like it's day visits, I guess, however you wanna figure it out, they don't.
So I wanted to bring up something else, so, I mean, we have the, as Bill said, the other board members and Bill, um, spoke to the planning board earlier in the month about putting a, putting a, an amendment on the warrant, um, for including dog grooming as part of this bylaw that doesn't specifically allow you to do what you do now. You could suspend your fir-, the first hearing we had at, at five forty-five, you could suspend that and wait for the town meeting to approve it, and then that would be an easy fix as well, but I don't, it's a timeline thing, you, you were talking about how long can you wait to do this? I mean, right now, we're putting, you know, we're putting lipstick on a pig fight right now, basically, by, by making this in a kennel. Cause it's really not, but it's, it does incorporate it within it, so it's a way to fix it. But the best way is, is if, if we, if our bylaw is allowed for a grooming in a residential, that would be the easiest, because it's, that's the way it is.
I'm concerned about the kennel. I'm concerned about everything else that goes along with a kennel, like what I'm gonna have to prove that I don't have any intention of doing.
I shared Sean's, Sean's concern, I mean, that's, you know, I thought about it this afternoon when I was reviewing the documents, and I thought the only way we could do it is, is to condition your use to be a very narrow use, um, and not, not allow you to have you know, more than a, more than a couple of dogs on your premise at the same time.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, so in the, let's say, so the, the zoning change passes and by August, it's been approved by the state, could she apply for a new permit to make it under the grooming, or is it, you just leave it?
I would, I would leave the other, the, what, the first one in place, and we just, we just need something in writing from her that says she allows us to continue it.
Yep.
It's cause it's, we, we have to act on it within a certain period of time, if you give us written permission to go beyond the deadline, we can do that, we can hold it open for months if, if, if you will, agree with us.
Right.
But, but if she goes, let's say she says, uh, let's say we go and she gets the permit, special permit for the kennel, as a kennel.
Right.
Then it gets approved that dog grooming is under the special permit. Does, so she's, she's got a permit to do proper, it is a kennel, does, does it make any sense, or is there any advantage for her to, in, let's say, a year from now, switch that special permit from kennel to dog grooming in the future?
Um, the only, the only thing, um, that occurs to me is that, um, if we approve the kennel, um, it might take her a while to get the, all the.
The other, the other boards on board.
Right.
And what would I even say?
It might, it might take her as long as it takes to get the new bylaw fixed, um, in which case it becomes moot and, and we reopen the, uh, the grooming, uh, application.
But what would I even say to the Board of Health? It was two months of meetings just for my dog grooming, how are you gonna go and defend myself that I wanna have a kennel? Like, what would I even say?
Well, it would be limited to what I.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think the thing is, we're gonna, if we limit it to saying it's one to three dogs or one to two dogs, you bring that to the Board of Health. It's, it's in writing to say it's gonna be a small number of dogs and they should just.
And it would be no overnight stays as well, you wouldn't be.
Make it doggy daycare though, would that be like, well, why are you even getting a kennel license if you wanna be doggy daycare, and that's not allowed in the bylaws, so.
Right.
Here we are again.
We're, we're, we're gonna fix that too, so, no, but I think, I think you, you just need to go slow. Um, on this, on the kennel part of the thing. But meanwhile, you'll be okay until, uh, we can get this bylaw changed and.
So why can't we just put the conditions so that they're so, they're, it's a kennel, but restricted to the dog grooming at, in, in care activities of that time limit of that many dogs and and it kinda doesn't just take care of itself?
Yeah.
With the conditions on, like, the Board of Health is just gonna go, oh, okay, it's the same activity.
Sounds good to me.
So, please, do the motion, uh, do, uh, we didn't do public comment, that, are we doing public comment?
We, we need to make some findings of fact that, um, say, you know, give, give some sentences that we're gonna put in here, finding that and, um, conditions.
Bill, Bill, do you wanna have public comment, uh, limited public comment, um, on this one? Before we do findings of fact?
Sure. Is, uh, anybody, uh, in the meeting have, have anything to say about this project? Okay.
That was easy. Okay.
Um, so in terms of, of finding the fact, we need to go through the special permit criteria. Which of course I don't have in front of me as usual. Has somebody got that?
Is that now packet?
Are you talking about one forty-five sixty-five, Bill? This is the A through G?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll, 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 I'll read it out to you, and then you can go through your, what you normally do. It's under one forty-five hyphen sixty-five, um, subparagraph A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for proposals.
And, uh, I think that there's no, um, no issues there.
Okay. Subparagraph B, suitability for the site for the proposed use.
It's a, you know, it's a residential site, it's, uh, it's got a, a, a nice big setback from the street, so. Nobody, uh, nobody's really gonna be, uh, heard anything that's going on in there.
And, um, subparagraph C, just for everybody, any board member can add in, add their comments to this. C, impact on traffic flow and safety, uh, I would say this is negligible, um, one or two cars every couple hours is minimal. At best, that's what I'd say.
I agree.
Um, D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. Aside from what the, what the historic commission has said with the door versus shades of the door or bling, or whatever, um, other than that, I don't think there's any, any, um, in fact, I think it's been improved from what it, what it looked like before.
Yeah.
The activity's gonna be taking place inside.
Yeah, yeah. Um, subparagraph E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, water of, uh, source of water and drainage.
Uh, we've already had the Board of Health weigh in on, uh, on the, uh, grooming part of the, the laying in, uh, and we're gonna restrict it to, uh, two dogs, so I don't think there's, there's gonna be a huge impact.
Okay. Um, subparagraph F, adequacy of utilities and other public services.
Uh, no impact on that.
Would you say, Bill?
I said no impact on that.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, subparagraph G, impact on ground and service water quality and other environmental and natural resource considerations.
I think that steps are being taken to prevent, uh, any impact.
That's it for the, uh, findings of fact. Um, Candace, how many dogs, um, would you ever have on site at one time?
Two, maybe three at the most if they're little dogs, but that's only a couple of my clients have three little dogs. Usually two or one or two.
I think the low, the lower we qualify, the better it's gonna be for the Board of Health to accept it, so would two be sufficient for you?
Majority, yeah, would be no more than two.
Okay.
That's maybe only twenty percent of my clients have two dogs.
Do you, do you have like back to back to back appointments? Or you?
Do you like a half hour lap in between the two, the appointments, like one leave and one will come?
All right, so, all right, so you're not gonna have three people waiting in line, cause, cause.
No, no, I schedule appointments by the hour, and I usually do fifteen, at least fifteen minute gap in between appointments, so.
Okay.
How many do you do a day?
So I, Wednesdays and Fridays, I do maybe six, seven little dogs. But they usually, the little dog takes an hour if I'm grooming, and then sometimes I'll, I work on my husband's schedule, cause I have four kids. So if I do, some other days, I'll just do two little dogs, later afternoon appointments. I don't do many, maximum is twenty a week. So, I gave all that to the Board of Health, they have the full record of what my business was doing for a six month.
That's, that's why I kinda harped on the, the septic and all that, because of how many dogs per week, per month, per year, but that's the only thing I don't understand.
I guess.
I still can't find them why they questioned it, if they knew why it was going through.
But it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's the sheep in the wolf's clothing type, type of mentality, looking for a grooming, but she, but the only way we could get it approved is through a kennel permit.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, I would say that's why.
So, um, Candace, what are your hours?
Wednesdays and Fridays, usually like nine to five. And then I do Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday, like four to six or seven.
Five, seven at night?
Let's say Monday, Tuesday, Saturday?
Monday, Tuesday, thirty, Thursdays and Saturdays, I do like four to seven. I just do like a few little dogs, I, I work when my husband gets home and can take over kid duty. He's off on Wednesday and Friday, so I do daytime hours on Wednesday and Friday.
You give him two days off?
Yes, no, you get to take care of the kids, so it's.
Well, do we wanna say something like, um, business activities are Monday through Saturday?
Yeah.
Nine to seven? Now, I don't wanna limit you on like, what if you change days and.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have a two and a four year old, so once the little ones are in school, I'll probably just do like five hour days during the day. Won't have to do around his schedule, but for now, it's what works. So, another couple of years of doing that.
What's, what's the hour, what's the hour range again, start to finish?
Nine to seven P M.
That's Monday through Friday, or we, the weekends?
Saturday. Although, like she's saying, the four of those days are only part time, but I, I'd like to.
Yeah.
She's gonna wanna change times and days and things like that, so should have some flexibility there.
All right. Is somebody gonna make a motion?
Um, what other restrictions are those? So, so up to two dogs at a time? Um.
Well, Candice, do you have your own dogs?
I have one.
Okay. I would qualify for no more than two dogs, um, exclusive of, of the owner's pets, um, on, on location at any one time.
Okay.
I assume you're making the motion, darling, you're writing all this stuff down, I can see you, I can see you going at it, so.
Well, I'm hoping that our, um, it's being written down for the, Beth's keeping track of these for the, uh, I wanna say subject to this criteria, but there was something else and I can't think of it right now, so up to two dogs, we got hours, um. There was something else I wanted to add in there, just, I'm trying to, how, with, if the restrict, if this is worded correctly, then the Board of Health isn't gonna have a problem with it.
Well, let's look at the Board of Health again.
Sorry, it went.
So just for reference, darling, the, the, uh, the, uh, the Board of Health was how many dogs? Um, does the applicant intend to clean the kennel space, uh, would the kennel have floor drains? Would the applicant be offering overnight boarding? No. Um, how many employees would the kennel have? Um, you're the, you're the only, you're the chief cook and bottle washer over there, Candace?
Yep, it's only.
Um, how, how many employees, okay, how does the applicant intend to deal with potential nuisance issues? Cut them fast and move them out.
Yes, and, and my, my new room is fully insulated and very soundproof.
So darling, the only thing I would add to that li- limited restrictions would be that there's no employees other than the owner. Own, it's owner, um, owner, um, operated with no, no additional employees.
Okay, and, um, is there a way to say no overnight?
Limited to daytime, limited date to, to daytime.
Yeah, but do the hours take care of that?
Yeah, you'll, you'll limit it by the hours.
Hours would, the hours would take care of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So first, we need to do that motion, I don't have it in front of me, I mean, do you have, try it from memory? I move that, that use subject to the criteria, the proposed use will not have adverse effects that over balance. Dave, you got it, will you read it?
I can't find it, um.
Which over balances beneficial effects on the neighborhood or the town?
Yeah.
Do the particular characteristics of the site.
I mean, we've only been doing this for a hundred years between the three of us.
All right, is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sean Pearson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well, Bill Catigan. All right, is there a motion on the special permit?
I move to create a special permit under zoning in the zoning bylaw one forty-five twenty-six B um, to Candace Hager's room for the notice in front of me. We'll just stick with the, what the.
I, darling, I, I, you kind of, you kind of, um, shaded out there on your, on your voice, like, when it was a motion.
Can, can you do it? Cause you have the legal notice.
A mo- motion that we grant a special permit to K assessment for a special permit under zoning bylaws one forty-five hyphen twenty-six B nine residential A and B special permitted uses pursuant to one forty-five hyphen sixty-five special permit.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sean Pearson?
Yes.
And, uh, I'll vote yes as well, Bill Catigan.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we approve, Bill Catigan to sign on behalf of the, 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 the board members on the, on the permit.
Second.
Polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Uh, Sean Pearson?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Okay. So.
So, um, we still have the other one that's hanging out there?
Yeah.
I might recommend, Candace, that you, um, you give us.
Hang on, my dog is.
Sounds like he's hungry.
You have a permit for that dog?
Oh, Candace, what I would suggest, um, because of the kind of the twisted road that we're going here, the, the best way to get this done would be as a special permit, as a grooming like you want. If the town meeting passes it, and if the A G's office blesses it, that may come in July and August. It may, and it may take you that long to go through the Board of Health and all that stuff, so my suggestion would, would be to request for us to keep your original application open. Um, you'd have to do it in writing, um, let's say till, um, um, I'm not sure how to do that, cause we, we have to, it has to be a date certain, we can't just leave it, leave it hanging, um, open ended, we need to be certain, um. What do you think, Bill? Are you, you able to get the leg out from under the dog now?
I was watching my wife try to tame the, uh, the beast.
So we have, I, I suggested that she keeps the, the first application open, but it's gotta be to a date certain. Um, you wanna just say like July twentieth or something like that, or, and then if it doesn't?
Um, well, we can continue it to a date uncertain, we can agree, like, agree to that, and then we don't have to.
As long as she's, as long as you put in writing, I guess, if you do that.
Yeah, right.
So what do you think, Candace?
That's fine.
So will you, will you go down and see, see Beth, um, tomorrow or the next day? Okay. Thank you. All right, so, um.
As far as the Board of Health, are they gonna contact me or I need to contact them? Will they?
Bill, why don't you go through your normal, normal routine about what?
My normal routine, yeah. Um, yeah, I don't know what to tell you about the Board of Health, but, uh, my advice is to go slow. Um, but anyway, with regard to this decision, we have fourteen days to file it. Then there's a, uh, twenty day appeal period. And, um, at the end of the twenty days, you can get a letter from the town clerk certifying that no appeals have been filed because any, any appeals would have to, uh, be copied to her. And, um, then you also have to record the decision in the registry of deeds and, uh, is it just Cambridge now or, I don't know?
You can do it anywhere now. Cambridge, Lille.
No, you can go to Lille.
Yeah.
In any case, you have to record the decisions so that, uh, it's, it's, uh, tied to your deed so that, you know, we don't, if, if we all lose the paperwork, it's, it's, the registry still has a copy.
So, so Candace, the, um, we can increase, we can quicken up the time when the, the decision is written by just talking nice to Beth, so to speak. The twenty day appeal period, we can't touch that. That's, that's state, okay? Um, but, um, the Board of Health is gonna know what we did because Beth will talk to them. And then I would just recommend that goes, go see them and get the ball rolling like, like Bill said, just go slow. So, um, so that hearing is over. I'll, I'll make a motion that we, that we reopen the Candace Hagg's room, um, hearing for special permit under one forty-five twenty-six B.
Second?
Second.
So we're gonna make a motion to, uh, continue this or make it to a date uncertain?
Yeah, after we, after we reopen it, yes. So polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay. So now we, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to a date uncertain.
Okay.
I'm just not sure that you can do that. This is, um, I'd feel.
You're not talking too loud.
Yeah, this is Beth.
Yeah, we can't barely, barely hear you. Pick up your.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm just not sure that you can do that. Uh, I don't know. If you have case, you know, if you have some.
I think you have to be, I think it has to be a date certain myself, but.
I do too. I, I'd feel much better about that. I don't care what it is, but I don't think I can continue a public hearing clear administratively without a date. And it's time.
Hey, well, how about the fifth of July or something like that?
Let me ask Beth.
It's the last day of a month.
Well, before we pick a date, Beth, do you have any, any, um, understanding or maybe, maybe, um, I'll bring John Barrett into this. Do you have any understanding as to when the town warrants? Think you, if you don't want us to call you, John, you gotta hide your picture because we won't see you.
I can run, but I can't hide, I guess.
When the, when the, when the warrant's submitted to the A G's office, what's the typical turnaround time?
Um, I believe the town clerk said it's, um, a month. So, I mean, and I don't know, I mean, she made it. Uh, yeah, we'd have to ask the town clerk, but even when town meeting passes it, like when legislation is passed by Congress, it's going, you know what I mean? Unless otherwise, as far as I know, you don't have to wait for the A G.
Oh, no, we do for, for.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. John, what do you think?
Um, yes and no. Um, the, the town, when the town approves it, it's approved, but it's still subject to the Attorney General's approval as well. So if you're fairly confident that the Attorney General is not gonna find any problems with it, uh, mostly it's procedural.
Yep.
Uh, issues, then, uh, you could probably, you know, rely on that. Um, as far as the turnaround time, I, I would say David, it's more like two to three months.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Because, uh, they do have ninety days to, uh, give a, uh, decision on a zoning bylaw change, and sometimes they ask for more time if it's a complicated thing like, uh, marijuana or something, but that's not your case here, so. I think you might hear from them sooner.
The good old days.
I think you should probably, it doesn't give unsolicited advice, but I think you should probably have a date certain, um, rather than.
Okay, all right.
Well, John, I think we solicited you.
And I'm not a solicitor anymore.
I, well, I know, I missed, I missed all those referrals.
How about if we, how about if we stretch it out to August thirty-first?
I was actually gonna suggest, I was actually gonna suggest, um, first week in June. So if we feel comfortable with, it passes town meeting and it's a simplified adding, adding of dog grooming into a bylaw, we can just pass it and just.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yes.
It should be one on the counter.
We're gonna have to have a special meeting just to continue this sucker.
Well, we could do that with three people though. We could do that with, it's just an administrative process.
Yeah.
Well, my thought by stretching it out is if we had another meeting between now and then, you know, we could just get a letter of withdrawal of one of, I don't know, or, or just have more time to take care of it. But whatever you guys think is best.
Um.
Do we not call?
I'm going, I'm going with, I'm going with the first, when, when is town meeting? What's the date on the town meeting?
May third.
Yeah.
May third.
May third. I would, I would say Wednesday, June eighth. That's what I would say.
Okay, is there a second?
At what time? Sorry.
Uh, that was at five thirty. You didn't, you didn't hear that?
No, sorry.
Oh, good, a second. Okay, polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sean Pearson?
Yes.
Uh, and I'll vote yes, okay. Motion carries.
Perfect. Candace, that means we'll, we'll, we'll take, on June ninth, if it passes town meeting, we'll, we'll be able to get it.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, sorry, my battery was gonna die. I just plugged you in.
Okay.
Okay.
So we continued the first application to, to June eighth, Wednesday, June eighth at five thirty?
Okay.
And, um, if it passes town meeting, then we'll take, we'll take that, that, um, application up on the vo- on a vote.
So what happens to the one we just approved then, the kennel? What do we do with that? If we were to switch gears, go back to dog grooming, approve a special permit that way, what do we do with this?
I think, I'll have Bill answer one.
I, I, I think we'll just leave it out in hyperspace.
Yeah.
You know?
There's a chance that the Board of Health won't even move by then. But June eighth.
I don't think it's gonna bother anybody.
Yeah.
What about my, uh, neighbor that is concerned about my upcoming business?
Uh, well.
We considered it when I, with, when we were voting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll talk to George and tell him that it's not a big deal.
Okay.
I need to talk to him anyway. Okay. So what time is this next hearing?
Five thirty, oh.
Six forty-five. We're, we're a few minutes late.
All right, good luck, Candace.
And I will come see you tomorrow, Beth.
All right, so, um, is there a motion to open the, uh?
I gotta find that one first.
Two forty-one Main Street application.
So be it.
Second.
Uh, polling the members, Darlene?
Yes.
Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And although, yes, okay, we're open. The clerk will read the, uh, notice.
The clerk will read it once he finds it?
Okay, hang on, I, I, I've got it here.
I, I literally can't find that one.
In accordance with M G L chapter forty-eight, if I could read, and the Townsend zoning bylaw, the Townsend zoning Board of Appeals will hold a remote access virtual public hearing on Wednesday, February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two at six forty-five P M on the application of C and J Realty Trust, uh, what is this? U D T dated seven twenty-four, two thousand twelve for a special permit under zoning bylaw one forty-five sixty-five and one forty-five twenty-seven C three. The applicants are proposing to convert a building into mixed use by adding four two-bedroom apartments and two wetband room apartments to the second and third floor of the pre-existing non-conforming commercial structure at two forty-one Main Street, otherwise known as the Townsend Floors Building for those who have been around. Uh, map fifty-one block ninety-four lot zero, public remote only access is by a Zoom link and parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at the virtual hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of this application are available for review in the offices of the town clerk and the zoning Board of Appeals office during business hours or by emailing a request for a digital copy to Beth. William Cattigan, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, published in the Groton Herald, January, January twenty-eighth and February fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Bill, before we continue, before we open, can I just ask the, a general question of the applicant and, and the attorneys that I see on this thing? Who, who is the law firm that's gonna be, um, doing the condominium, um, structuring?
Um, at this point, uh, David, John Barrett, uh, speaking for, uh, C and J Realty and, and Mark Curtis. I know the initial applicant, uh, request to the, uh, building, uh, commissioner was about converting it to condominiums.
Right, that's what the application was, yeah.
But, but, um, that's not actually what the application, uh, and the appeal is. The appeal is just for a mixed use.
Okay. But still though, I see, because that's all we do in my office is condominium work and we do a lot of the, well, I just wanna make sure I'm not conflicted out.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I don't do condominium work and so I.
You've given me compliance before.
And, and I told, uh, Mr. Curtis, who's, who's here, by the way, um, but, um, um, that, um, it would probably be, uh, behoove him to get someone else to deal with the condominium conversion, which I see as a completely separate legal issue as far as the holding title to the property and not really, um, a, a, a zoning concern.
Okay, so let me, let me ask you a professional Ethics one oh one question. If I rule, if I participate in this hearing and then Mr. Curtis comes to, uh, Perkins and Ansel in, uh, Westford, by the way, I'll give you the number in a minute. Um, would that preclude me from being able to do in the, uh, structure on the condominium?
I would say probably, David, yeah. I mean, if you have a, have participated in a particular interest.
I would say so, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, and Mike, you don't have anybody pu- have, you haven't selected anybody for the condominium work yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
And, and I really, you know, it, it, it's kind of like just an option. I mean, really what we're looking to do is, uh, get some apartments in there, small apartments.
Okay. It's just the mixed use that you're going for, right? All right, I'll, I'll continue, guys, John. Thanks, John.
All right, Dave. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, I might proceed.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, um, and thank you, uh, Mr. Cattigan, members of the, the board. Uh, I guess, I think most of you know me, although I, I know there's a few new faces, at least to me, on the zoning board. You've probably, uh, I think Vicky and Sean, you've probably been on for eight years, but that's probably how long it's been since I've been before the zoning board. Maybe not quite that long. But, um, anyway, I'm, I'm representing the C and J Realty Trust and, uh, Mark Curtis. Um, Mark and his, uh, Realty Trust purchased the property this past summer. I think it was in July, Mark. Um, that, uh, the property changed hands from, uh, the Townsend Center Realty Trust, which folks, folks are probably familiar with, uh, John and Linda Giordina and Ed Hayward. Um, and, um, the thing that motivates the current request is the fact that, uh, unfortunately, uh, commercial, um, the needs in the center of town have, have, uh, kind of slackened off. Um, uh, we're, we're feeling kind of lonely up here on the second floor, uh, right now. Um, uh, we're the only tenant. And, uh, I think Mark, uh, in an effort to make the building, you know, commercially viable, uh, has, uh, determined that the thing to do is to, uh, put some apartments in. And it seems that it's, it's something that is, uh, fairly common in the, the downtown area, uh, to have, uh, some commercial on the first floor and, uh, residential on the, the upper floors. Uh, so, we're submitting this, uh, application for a special permit under, uh, one, was it one forty-five twenty-seven C? And, uh, section sixty-five of special permits, uh, to allow, um, the conversion of a part of the property, uh, this basically be the second floor and the third floor, uh, to have four two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom unit. Um, I think, you know, some of the amenities, the fact that it, uh, you know, it, it's in the center of town, it would allow people to, you know, fairly easy access, walking access to the post office, uh, town hall, uh, barber shops. You know, all the amenities that we have, uh, here in downtown Townsend. Um, and, um, just, um, going to the, uh, special permit uses, um, I, I would just suggest that it's, uh, compatible with the, the area. And I'm gonna have to flip to my my, uh, section here on, uh, section sixty-five, special permits. Um, you know, the, it's, obviously it's an existing building, so there's no change in the footprint.
But here is the building, John?
Um, Ellen, you would ask me, my recollection is, it is, um, built in nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
That's about right.
Um, because, and I'll, I'll hockin' back to the, my days on the zoning board, uh, because this was one of the last, uh, matters that I dealt with, I believe, as a member of the zoning board and, and about that time. And the issue then was whether or not the, the the variance would be granted to allow the building to be set more forward, closer to Main Street, so that would be in line with all the other buildings on Main Street. And some of you might remember the building that was here before, uh, this building, uh, was a long rambling building, uh, that contained Townsend Pizza, Townsend Package Store, uh, I believe an antique shop and at one point, uh, the, the Wren Cafe, uh, which was the, the one and only, uh, bar, uh, and, uh, in the town. Um, sadly, uh, those buildings, uh, burnt down sometime in late eighties and this building was constructed. And, uh, that was the thing that happened with the zoning board. I, I think the only issue was that, um, that setback variance, uh, so that, because what that allowed, quite frankly, is the passage at the rear of the building to access the parking that's in the back lot. Um, I don't know if all, do you, all of you have the, uh, plan that was submitted with the application? I know it's kind of hard to tell, but I think we did have eight copies.
We got a small copy of it. It's really hard to read, but.
Yeah, but you, you should have all gotten eight copies, or at least I submitted eight copies of the lodge plan too.
We all, um, they had digital copies. Would you like me to screen share it?
Oh, if you can do that, Beth, that'd be good, because I kind of queued up to do that, but I don't know if I'd be able to do it.
Okay. Well, if Hartley would let me do that, I'll screen share or Dave, um, whoever.
Um, that was originally supposed to be a butler building.
Not sure if Hartley heard me or not.
We existed.
Hartley or Dave Funelli, can you give Beth the sharing capability, please?
I just, this is Hartley, I just did.
All right, thanks, Hartley.
All right, now I gotta figure out how to do this. Awesome. All right. So. All right. See what I can do for you here. Yeah, let's see. It's still a bit hard to see because it's reproduced. It's an old plan. Yeah, it's really old plan.
Yep.
So how, how can I help you see it better?
Um, well, I think people can see where the original building is, uh, well, the building right now. And it's in the front, uh, section of the plot. And then there is a passageway and there is a, uh, And then there is a passageway and there is a uh, a shared easement uh between um. Uh, C and J Realty and McNabb's properties. The McNabb's own the properties here. Um, and there's a shared easement right through there that allows um access out to Bow Street.
Beth, can you zoom in on that, on the?
Let me try.
Yeah, go to, go to like a hundred and twenty-five or something.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah.
A little bit, yeah. Um.
Want to zoom in more, John?
Say again, Dave?
Want her to zoom in more?
Uh, I think that, I think if you guys can see it, it's, it's all right. I mean, you can see how the, the building, as far as the variance from times, you know, back in the eighties there was. Allowed, so that the building would be set more forward along the lines of everybody else on Main Street. And that um, that uh, that allowed communication from this parking lot area here. Out through Bow Street and to this parking lot area here, which is also owned by uh now C and J Realty. Um. So. Um, the one upshot to my chagrin, I was not a tenant at the time, I came in about nineteen ninety. Um, and um. The only thing that's uh affected me, quite frankly, is the fact that because it's not, there's not a forty-foot setback. We couldn't have a freestanding sign to show who the occupants were in the building, which we never pursued as a variance to get a freestanding sign. But anyway, I, I do have.
We would have denied it, John, anyways.
Yeah, no, and, and, yeah, my fondness for me, guys, I, I guess that's why it would happen. Maybe that's what can do it. Um, but anyway, um, so I think, you know, that. To, to just refer to the, the special permit criteria, that I think the, the lot is adequate for the proposed use. Um, we, we believe the parking is adequate, um, because uh there are, on this plan, there are twenty-eight spaces. Um, the. Some reason, there are spaces that didn't get counted in there, because there is a spot for parking immediately behind the building. Uh, and if any of you are familiar with the. Environments at all, there is a parking spot where I, I oftentimes park, but not always, right at the rear of the building. And then there's also a parking space at the entrance to the Townsend Floors. Um. Uh, entrance. Uh, so in that little spot, I, I know I've got my pointer here and you guys can't see that, but. Um. Uh, let's see.
But we're, we're, we're not worried about the, the parking, I mean, that's, that's site plan review, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, they, they would, uh, yeah, we, we, then we thought best, let me say that, to go before the zoning board first to see if the. The concept here as a, as a special permitted use would be acceptable to the zoning board, and then. Uh, if that was the case, then we'd be going to site plan review uh with the planning board.
Well, I still, I still think you got the cart before the horse, because you don't have a septic design, and so you don't know how many bedrooms you can support in this uh.
Um, I, I know, Ma- Mark, maybe you can speak to that, because they have had the, the Board of Health out there and a septic design has been done.
Sure, but. This is Mark, board, uh, board members, and uh, I appreciate you taking the time. Uh, there is a septic design that is done. We haven't admitted, we met with the, the Board of Health agents to conduct the perk test and everything. Uh, the design is actually parking lot approved, it's H twenty instead of traditionally H ten. Um, we do meet the, the criteria, we're actually above and beyond that. Um, somewhat, not terribly, but we're above it. Uh, each, the way, the way that this basically works is two things, obviously groundwater and soil conditions. The same sand that's there is what we, I'm in the excavation business, the same material that's there is pretty much what we haul into sites. For septic systems, it has a two-minute percy rate, each, each bedroom. Uh, has to, has to represent a hundred and ten gallons per day, that's the flow ratio for each bedroom.
Right.
Um, that's Title V standards. So, when you, when you add it all up as far as the ratios that we gotta uh meet, the criteria, the design criteria that we have to meet, we're there as far as uh. Uh, what we, what we're gonna submit to the Board of Health once we get through the hurdle with the ZBA.
Okay.
Yeah, it's actually all, all done, the uh, the septic design.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Um, so, um. I guess try to uh. Sum up, uh, we feel the, the site's adequate, the, is adequate utilities. We don't think there would be any uh traffic uh impacts from this. Uh. Pro- probably, if anything, it might be less than would be if the building was fully occupied by um, commercial operations. Um. Should be no impact on groundwater or uh surface water. Um. As, no impact on the neighborhood's visual character, I mean, the building's gonna stay the same. Um, I, I think I should speak to the issue, though, as far as this, the septic system, so that people are aware of this, that. Uh, the, the septic system would be installed underneath the parking. Um, and, and that's, I understand, is a permissible thing with the, the Board of Health. Um, so there would be some disruption in the parking for a period of time until that, that was installed. Uh, and I'd be, by the parking, I mean, the parking in the rear parking lot, you know, the, the back. Of the uh, the back section there. Um, also, um. Uh, just to note that um, there, there is an agreement between uh. Well, C and J Realty, the original agreement was with Townsend Realty Trust and uh Charlotte McNabb. Uh, for uh parking uh in the back parking lot. So, you know, there, there would be some use by customers or employees of. Uh, the McNabb Pharmacy and the uh Medical Assistance or Medical Equipment Building. Um. So, um.
Well, that's a slight fan review uh issue.
Parking, right, but we think that the parking, it, with the apartments, the, the parking that we've, we feel would be needed, it'd be twenty-five spaces. There's twenty-eight on this plan and um, I believe that there, there would, should be two others acknowledged in that, but of course, like you say, Bill. That would be uh up to the planning board.
Um, John, how many uh commercial um, separate commercial uh establishments will you end up with?
Um, I believe there'd be what, three, Mark?
Yes, yes, that's what there would be.
So that's all on the first floor, then? The, the upper floors are for residential?
Right, and I think it's, if I could, Mark, say that it's gonna be phased in. Because I really.
That's exactly.
Really want to move out of my office immediately. Since I'm on the second floor, as many of you know. Um, but um, the, the, the commercial would be on the first floor, the main, the main floor and the uh Townsend Floors down um, in the basement, basically.
Hmm, okay.
So what's gonna develop first, John, is the third floor's gonna, gonna, gonna?
Ye- yes, Dave, I believe that's Mark's plan, right, Mark, to, to start with the third floor and.
Exactly.
Work his way down.
But, John, when I saw, when I saw this application, the one really um ending question was, where are you going?
That's what everybody's been asking me.
To the third floor.
Yeah, yeah, expectably, that, uh, I think Mark's finding a, a nice little office at a real low rent for, for me and Mary.
John, so there'd be, there'd be six residential units, so six apartments, and then how many commercial units?
Um, well. It's, it's a little bit. Hard to say, darling, in the sense that. There, there could be four, I imagine, maybe even five. Because the way this building is set up, I mean, you could have, and some of you may remember at one time. Um. Uh, on, on my floor, the second floor, there was my office, there's Dan Murphy's office, and there was uh Schofield Group. On the, the first floor, there was um, uh Edward Jones. Uh, Hayward at uh Robbins Insurance. And. I guess it's, that's, uh, uh, Robbins Insurance and um, uh Edward Jones uh, uh Investment Brokers there, so two. And three upstairs, so it, it can change, it, you know, it, right now, there's. What, Mark, three tenants on the first floor?
Uh, there's two on the, two on the first floor, there's what total in the building, right now.
So two on the first floor, one in the basement and me.
And the rest is empty.
I'm not worried about, I'm not asking about occupancy, but how many physical units are there?
Well, that's, that's.
Well, well, I guess, right, right now.
John, can I excuse, can I um interrupt for a minute? Someone is, we got some backfeed going on, if, if you're not, if they're not talking, could everybody mute themselves so we can hear?
That's better.
Uh, so I think darling's question was, was that, uh, how many are there now?
Yeah, yeah, so I know, in the basement is one, that's Townsend Floors, and on the main first floor, where, how many units are there?
There, I think, I'm wrong, Mark, but I believe two.
Okay, okay.
Well, I think that, that, you know, you may end up um. Parking space limited on those commercials, that's all, because I think they. It's a five-space minimum per commercial use, but that's just my recollection, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I think you're right, Bill, I think that the fi- five spaces, but you know, the, the bylaw does have kind of a funky thing to it, where it's. I, I, unless it's changed without my knowledge, but I think I got the most current version, it, it says, if it's retail, it's a minimum of five spaces or. Uh, the floor space divided by a hundred and eighty square feet. Or if it's office or professional, it's the floor space divided by two hundred square feet.
Okay.
To, to come up with a number of parking spaces.
I think you're right about that, yeah, it used to be pretty elaborate.
I guess there's maybe a little bit of difference between retail and office, but.
Yep. Yeah, there is. Okay.
Anyway, um. That's um, um, I don't know if the, the board has any other questions, Mark, do you have any other things that you'd like to?
No, um, I think we pretty much uh mentioned it. Far as I can see, pretty much everything.
Um, I guess, just one other thing that I guess you could mention is that the, the billing, building is fully sprinkled. Uh, does have an elevator, um, so um. We think that uh, being able to do this would make, make sense. And you would, could walk to the band concerts, not have to take your car.
Okay.
Like you just open your window, you could listen to the band concert, I guess.
Yeah, you could hear the clock, too.
Oh, yeah.
So, Bill, we have to, we have to go through the comments, because one of the comments was a new guy to the sprinkling system, they need to upgrade it from a hat, from a one inch to a one, in and a half, one and a half inch.
Yeah, the, the, I don't know, did you, did you notice those comments, John?
No, I did not.
Okay, let me, let me go read the comments. Okay, the Board of Health said, um, property asserted by Town Water was acceptable to accommodate the proposed use. Um, and it says no plans have been submitted for the septic system and blah, blah, blah. So. Uh, the Water Department uh wants you to upgrade your supply line from a one-inch to a one-and-a-half-inch line. Or z- zinch, whatever the heck that is. Must be a technical term.
I don't know what that was, I was trying to, trying to figure out what he wrote.
Yeah. Um. And then they want to know how many units in total will be in the building when done, so um. You, we'll, we'll get you copies of these.
Um, okay.
The Housing Authority voted to support. The endeavor, uh, Conscom says no jurisdiction, the Planning Board Chairman said that as an individual, he supports this project. Anything else, David, for comments?
No, those are the ones that I've seen, I, I, I was gonna comment after the meeting about Lances from the planning board, he says, as chairman of the planning board, I, as an individual, that's like an oxymoron, I don't even know what that means.
Yeah.
You gotta have a vote of the board, not an individual, that we just put it up on the main street and ask people to respond, you know?
Uh, all right, so we need to do the findings of fact. Which John has conveniently uh put in uh his application. Whatever I did with that now.
I can read them again, and, and we have to do our own files, we can't, we can't rely on the applicant's.
Yeah, you can't, I've got mine whole cloth there, Bill.
Because if I don't even know why we would be meeting.
I can't.
This is not, this is not the old days.
Bill, before we go, though, we, I, there are a few people in the, in the meeting, um, Mr. McNabb and so on, that made, there's some public comment that someone, someone would like to make.
Yeah, that's, that's appropriate, is, uh, anybody have anything to say about this project who's listening in this meeting? Uh, Terry, you're, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys, I'm Terry McNabb and um, I'm representing the, all of our, we, we have a lot of the abutters, uh, the abutting properties um around this project, um. Uh, it's, they're in a trust, Terrence McNabb, um, and Betty McNabb Family Trust, I'm the trustee of that. And um, just wanted to let you know, I've spoken with both John and Mark and, you know, our family's in support of the project. Um, we think it's a great idea and um, we do have, um, we, my grandmother granted that easement. Many years ago, um, over, over our land and we gained rights to parking of that and. We um, we need that and like it, but um, you know, beyond that, I'm sure we're gonna be able to work everything out and um, I think that um, I think it's a great idea and we support the project.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right.
Okay, um, I'll read, I'll, I'll read them again, Bill, then you can comment, one forty-five hyphen sixty-five.
I have, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry, darling.
Um, so in the specially permitted area, it says, um, so this is C two. One to six dwelling units within a structure existing on the lot for which a building permit has been issued as of nineteen eighty-nine. Provided sufficient off-street parking is available on the site. And then, of course, is mixed use, so this building, you're built as nineteen eighty-nine. Do we assume the building permit was given by January of eighty-nine, or do we need to see something?
Um. Uh, boy.
I can't imagine a building like that is, is like built in, you know. Thirty days, but um, I don't know, it says, you're built as nineteen eighty-nine on public record.
But, darling, if you don't mind, what, what, what are you reading from, is that from section sixty-five or?
Yeah.
No, it's um, under DCD permitted uses and then.
One forty-five dash twenty-seven C two.
Allowed by special permit, so one forty-five dash twenty-seven C two. So that's the main sentence that allows this to be able to.
Well, you know, we could, we could make it subject to confirmation of the, yeah, date of the building permit. Because um. I'm pretty sure for this project, there's a building permit somewhere in the uh Building Inspector's files.
I just wanted to, uh.
Actually, I guess what we thought we were applying under was the, for mixed use, to be residential, commercial, so I'm not sure. Um. You know, what one to six dwelling units within a structure. You know, speaks to if it's.
Good point.
It's actually to convert an entire building. Or. You know, so I, I guess maybe there's something of a. Uh, a conflict there within the bylaw as to which.
You're kidding.
What do we fall under? And I guess it's up to you guys, um. But um, I think that what we, what we thought it was under. Or at least what I thought it was under was mixed use, residential, commercial.
Yeah, me as well, did um, Eric, did you go see Eric on this one, John?
I, I, I didn't, um.
Just came right to us. Just came right to us.
We, we appealed it. Mark, Mark spoke to him. Um, and um, Mark's opinion, well, I mean, I'm sorry, Eric's opinion was section one forty-five, twenty-seven, C three. States that mixed use residential commercial are permitted in the DCD district by a special permit uh from the zoning board. Bylaw does not define residential. And and at this time, Mark was asking also about co- condominimizing them.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're not, we're not doing that, at least not now. Um, maybe down the road in terms of a legal ownership, but I don't, I don't think Mark is envisioning doing that at, at this juncture. Um.
So you hear strictly for mixed use.
I'm okay with what everybody else is. I.
Yeah, I am.
I think so too.
Okay, it was a good catch though, Dar. I was wondering where you're going with the date of the permit, because I, I did read that, but um, I was going under the mixed use. Um.
Yeah. I can find out more exactly when the building permit was issued, but.
Gee, if I wanted to take, technically, if I want to take a building and make a bunch of units, I'll just make one of them commercial and I'll have mixed use.
Right.
For sure. Okay. You wanna go through the criteria, Bill?
Yes, please.
Okay, one forty-five hyphen sixty-five, some, some paragraph A, adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed uses.
Buildings.
Yeah, right. It's, I don't see any big changes coming along.
Okay, uh, some paragraph B, suitability of the site for the proposed use.
Um, it's, it's kind of a, a place we wanted to try to build some housing.
I know. I, I love the concept of putting residential in the downtown that I could, that someone could walk. I'm already assuming I'm renting one of them, um, that I could walk to the, to the band concert. I'll be neighbors with John and Mary.
Yeah, yeah. We might be moving in. I don't know.
There you go. Um, some paragraph C, impact on traffic flow and safety.
Yeah, I agree with John. I don't see a huge impact there. It's not, not measurable by traffic engineering standards, that's for sure.
Some paragraph D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and business.
I'd say no change.
No change.
Some paragraph E.
Rowdy parties. I mean, I, there's probably ra- possibility of a rowdy party or something, but you know, that's.
Yeah, sure. Um, some paragraph E, adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage. Um, that's to be determined by the Board of Health with the submitted septic design. Some paragraph F, adequacy of utilities and other public services.
Uh, don't see any impact there. I think um, the, the Water Department is gonna make you go to an inch and a half feeder.
Yeah, yeah. So. Beth, you gotta get a copy of those comments to John, um, if he hasn't already got them, so he can see that. Um, and some paragraph G, impact on ground and service quality and other environmental natural resource considerations. I don't see any impact of that at all. Okay, so I'll make a motion. I did find it, Bill, by the way. I'll make a motion that the proposed use will not have an adverse effects, which will balance as beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
Thirty-second. Yes, only member, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
And Sean.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, Bill Cattigan too. All right, that motion carries. Is there a motion on a special permit?
Okay, that's, that one I gotta look at here.
Oh, did you ever find a legal notice?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I was in the wrong. I, yeah. I thought this, uh, up until like four o'clock today, I thought the speak was next week. So I'm, I'm doing pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I, I moved to grant a special permit uh to C and J Realty Trust under zoning bylaw one forty-five dash sixty-five and one forty five dash twenty-seven three um to add four two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom apartments to two forty-one Main Street.
Um, before they get seconded, Darlene, um, are we just going on a mixed use and not really caring about the number of bedrooms at this point?
I'm just saying what they, what they propose to add.
So you just read it off? Okay.
Yeah.
Cause if they come back and say, well, we don't really want four two-bed, we want three two-bedroom and, and, and three one-bedroom, you know, I don't wanna, I don't know if that's.
Could we say up to then?
Yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, that's a good point, if I don't.
You wanna lock yourself in, John, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, there may be reasons why Mark might find it, well, maybe you can only do um, three, one unit. Yeah. One bedroom and, and the other three, four, two bedrooms, so.
You never know when you start taking billings apart, you might find some surprises.
Yeah, and any consideration the board can give. Sorry, didn't wanna interrupt you.
No, that's, I guess. Would you like to amend your motion then, darling? I don't know how you would say it.
I know, but I, I'm happy to amend it. Um. Up to six, up to adding up to six.
Residential units.
Residential units.
Up to, up to, yeah, up to six. Yeah, up to six. I think that would be appropriate. Then if they wanted to make a bigger suite and, and reduce the five units, then you'd still, you still wouldn't, you just couldn't be making more than six. I don't know if you'd make, I don't think you'd be able to put more than six in there anyways, John, looking at the floor plans. It'd be, it's pretty tight anyways.
Right, right.
So I'll correct that by, by saying by adding up to six uh residential units.
Okay, uh, and I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm still, um, I'm s- I'm still thinking about, um, I don't think you wanna just say adding units. You wanna say reconfiguring the floor plan.
Converting by converting.
Something like that.
You could say reali- reallocating to commerc- commercially, existing commercial and up to six residential units. That's probably the better way to say it.
I'm gonna, since nobody's second, I'm gonna friendly restate my motion. I moved to grant a special permit to C and J Realty Trust under zoning bylaw one forty-five dash sixty-five and one forty-five dash twenty-seven, C three to convert the building to convert the building.
Darling, can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, please.
To, to reallocate the existing commercial space to include up to six residential units.
I like that.
Sounds good.
That's my motion. Forty-one Main Street.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah. And I, and I'll second that. It's, it's a wonderful motion.
All right. Polling the members, Darlene.
Of course, yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Um, let me think. Yes.
Sean.
Yeah.
And I'll vote yes, Bill Cattigan. Okay, so the motion carries. Um, we have, uh.
Thank you.
John, you know this, we have fourteen days to file the decision. Uh, you'll get a copy of it in the mail with the town clerk stamp showing the date of filing and um then there's a twenty-day appeal period and uh, at the uh, at the end of that appeal period, you can collect a letter from the town clerk saying, no, feels have been filed if that's the case. And you need to record this decision and take your evidence of recording and uh town clerk's letter to the building department and get your billing permit.
Let's, yeah, that, thank you, Bill, and um I, I know that we have a few more things to check off, obviously, as, as you noted in the hearing that the, the bill, the Board of Health and the Planning Board, but uh, thank you for your assistance and then helping to make this uh project uh at least one step closer to reality.
Yeah, cool.
I'd like to thank the board also for your, for your time and for the approval. Thank you.
My pleasure. Don't, John, don't forget to send out a new, new address uh cards for me, will you?
All right, Dave.
All right. Well, what else we got?
Don't wanna keep you guys. Thank you very much again. Have a good night.
No problem.
Looks like we have a, a planning board referral.
What's that under agenda and preliminaries?
On the work session, three point one.
Oh, okay.
Speaking of which, under there, under work session, it says that the warrant closes March first. Did you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, that's next week.
We're gonna have to put a placeholder in if we wanna, you know, do anything. I already put in a placeholder for the dog grooming thing.
You did, okay.
Yeah, I haven't done anything for the, for the um age restricted housing.
Yeah.
Okay, so thirty-two Main Street, planning board mandatory referrals, is that the one?
Yeah.
Think that's um, oh, what's his name? He was, uh, George. Is that George Boyer's house?
Is that, is that really? Uh, he wants to make a food truck parking lot?
It's sold and I, nobody's done anything with it. And um, I think that's George Boyer's old house.
Uh-huh.
For everyone else on the zoning board, George Boyer used to be on the zoning board back in.
Yeah, he was. That's a tear down that place.
Did his wife sell it after he passed away?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that. Cause the sign, his sign is still out there, like Watchmaker or something.
Yep. So, um.
Could, could Beth just give us a summary of, of this, what the?
Um, I can, uh, if I can screen share, I think I lost my screen share. Oh, here we go. Got it. I'll just put it up and you can take a look at it. Um, it's in a pretty preliminary stage right now. Uh, I don't know if you can hear me. Yeah. Pretty preliminary uh conceptual site plan. Um, the application, yeah, it was in your folders, but uh essentially uh created, this is, th- this is a nice location because it has access to the rail trail. Um, and this is all we have right now. It's going to be, you know, temporary um, food trucks. Um, so there's, there's a lot to do in terms of the Board of Health. Um, but these are basically picnic tables. Um, this will be a bathhouse, restrooms and um, you know, we, it's a place to, for uh food, for waste. Um. Yeah, it will be a tear down, as you can see, there. But yeah.
Looks like he's gonna clear cut the lot.
Yeah, so you, you can certainly make a comment. I noticed that too. If you, yeah, cause I mean, it's all a lot of parking. Uh, there's nothing in the application about the surface of the parking area, I, whether it's, you know, gravel or, or um paved. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's, there's a lot more to, to come out in the site plan review. So this is again, very preliminary.
If they pave that much of the lot, they'd have a problem with previous surfaces.
Yeah.
That's like three quarters of the lot.
You, if you want, I can uh pull up the application and you can see there are a few photographs of what they have. They're kind of basing it um on another park.
Okay, that's what that is. Okay, I did see that in the application.
So you can see, I guess. Sorry?
Is it food?
It's food trucks. Yeah, food trucks would just pull in, park and serve. It's, it's probably gonna look similar to this one here, where you have the food trucks and.
That's interesting. So, so this is gonna be similar with the rail trail. Once it's extended to be up behind that, it's gonna be like what they have in downtown Pepperell where they actually created a boom for like the local restaurants, where people go in there and get their sodas and their sandwiches and they go on a, go for a walk on the trail.
Yeah.
I think, I think I like the idea.
Yeah, I would like to, yeah, make sure they leave some trees.
Trucks are excellent too.
Oh, yeah. So this is.
Oh, you know, we, we, I, I'd like to get the opinion of, of, of a longstanding um resident of Townsend, um, and Mr. Barrett, since he's, since he's continued to, to watch our meeting.
Ah, I don't see him on. Maybe he left.
Dave, uh, yeah, when I heard this, I thought, well, this is interesting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's uh, I, I guess I share some of the boards. You know, I think someone mentioned that it looks like you're gonna uh be paving a very large spot, but you know, I guess the, maybe the planning board would provide this, not all high-topped. I, I just think the idea of having a, a whole building lot and turned into a parking lot is not a you know, previous surface is not a good thing.
If you look at the.
Be very, I mean, you know, very compatible with the rail trail, but then I, I guess I wonder what, what happens to the other businesses. Um, that are there. Maybe they're not that accessible to the uh rail trail. I don't know, but.
Yeah, but if, if you look at the picture of, of the suggested site, that it's all, it looks like it's crushed stone or, or um gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's the, the other lot, right. I, I guess the only other thing I would say is and, and some of you will remember years ago when we had a charrette about what we want the town to look like and uh, there was a, an effort back then to say, we wanna try to keep Main Street so it doesn't turn into one big strip of commercial business.
We didn't want to root nine.
Nine or, or one nineteen enacted and it seems the tide of uh commerce or residential development makes it harder and harder to do. I don't know what you can do about it, but obviously this is a, a, another step in that tendency towards converting what used to be residential. I know there's another lone residence down there in the harbor in between McDonald's and I think uh Patriot Pizza that.
Yeah.
Can't imagine as long for the world.
Lonely.
Well, they've.
Um, it is commercial, right?
I think it is, Vicky.
Yeah, they rezoned those lots. Those three lots got rezoned commercial. They were supposed to be residential.
Yeah.
And um, I spoke against it at the time, but um.
Now you're gonna be, well, George Boy was, 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 he had a hand in it. He wanted to get him commercial so he could.
Oh, yeah.
His property.
Oh, they, they, everybody thought that the lots would be worth a lot more as commercial lots and uh.
Surprise.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Um, from, from a, from an individual perspective, I, I would, I would give my support to this project. I, I like the idea.
Yeah.
It would create a lot of traffic. It, it'd create more traffic though, wouldn't it?
Well, it's in a, it's in an area that's got a lot of traffic. It, it, that was, that was another reason that we kept them um residential was uh, it wouldn't create a lot of traffic, cause that Edward Road is a nasty intersection. Somebody got killed there. Um, I forget when, but um and this is, I, how far away from Edward Road is this? Does anybody know? It's like, it's like a couple hundred feet, so.
On the opposite side of the road.
Yeah, but curb cut is a curb cut, you know?
I, I just think that it's gonna cause a ton, it's more, a ton more traffic to a spot that you can't even get out. You know, you can't, you wouldn't be able to take a left out of the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
That's the same thing. It's the same thing.
Yeah, a- and I think it's horrible to take a left out of Hannaford too.
I don't see it, that's, I don't see it as gonna be that, that big of a, of a burden on, or increased traffic.
But it will be seasonal.
It'll be seasonal. People park there for, for the rail trail, but.
I, why, why would it only be seasonal?
Well.
Because people don't, there's a rail trail. The, the people don't tend, there's not that much traffic on the rail trail.
Who's to say that it's only gonna be for rail trail? I mean, if, if it's gonna be a different place to eat in town, you can have a lot of the businesses that are probably gonna take advantage and use it too. And, I mean.
So maybe that's one of the restrictions is, is.
Yeah.
If we're concerned about the traffic is.
Outside, I think it's gonna self-regulate. Um, they don't, a lot of people wanting to sit at a picnic table in thirty-degree weather.
Um, yeah, but they might drive up to get something because I mean.
Takeout.
Places.
Yeah, no, the food trucks will run in, in cold weather too, and they do in Boston. But like I said, they have pretty good food in the trucks.
Yeah, but that, that's impossible where there's a demand. I can't see there's gonna be a demand to, for a food truck in Townsend. That's not part of the warmer, warmer season.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I have a hard time seeing nine, that there'd be nine of them. I don't know that we could support that many.
I, I mean, you have, you have. I mean.
Probably gonna have old car shows there or something like that, you know?
Well, I, ideal, alls we have to do is either, either say we support it or no, no comment, like every. Well, I, ideal, alls we have to do is either, either say we support it or no, no comment like everybody does to us, or we, we, we are against it.
Or, or you might suggest a traffic study, it, it couldn't hurt if your concern is traffic, yeah, that's part of site plan, you could.
Traffic study and, and we're concerned about losing, uh, every tree on the lot.
Well, I, I'd be concerned about site, site, uh, view, uh, pulling in and out of there, right now there's a hill. Uh, I imagine they'd have to do some topography to be able to see coming in and out of there better.
Okay, well.
This is Mike Crowley, and can I offer something on the previous conversation about season, uh, operation of seasons?
Uh-huh.
True. I, I spoke with the applicant and, um, at the moment, their business plan is to only operate seasonally, they're not planning on operating in the wintertime. Um, obviously, that would be something that would have to get codified in some way if you wanted that to be addressed, but just for informational purposes, that's where the applicant is currently proposing.
Okay, thank you.
Just had a question, Bill, if I could.
Sure.
Uh, uh, I just wondered, this is coming to before you for a referral on site plan review, but. Is, is this something that is permitted, you know, you, they didn't need zoning permission for this?
I don't think so, I think this is converted to commercial, so I think they can deal with the planning board site review.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's, uh. You know, the only issues would be, uh, if the Board of Health, um, would require inspection of the truck or something, you know?
Hmm.
Yeah, the building commissioner did, um, already opine that is a by right.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Yes, it's a fairly low impact use, I would say.
Well. Whatever, I'm, I'm an hour away and I haven't eaten stuff yet, so I wanna.
Right, so Beth, can you, can you write the comments, summarize?
Absolutely, um, yeah, if I could just review, um, concern with traffic, um, concern with, uh, tree cutting. On the property, there's a, it's fairly well-treed right now, and then, um, site, uh, what do you call it, site view in, if for ingress and egress. There's a term for that, uh, technical term that the highway department would know, your site distance, the planning board will know, but. Those are the three that I have, is there anything else?
There was some expressed concern about clearing the lot.
Clearing.
Cutting the whole lot.
Yeah, they're cutting, thank you.
Yeah.
Um.
Just got that, okay. Yeah, I, I think, uh, you could say traffic, but you could also say that it, it's a particularly dangerous area for. A curb cut on Route one nineteen.
Okay.
And, uh, some, some traffic control may be required.
Okay.
Other than that.
Um, just, I, I just wanna go, go back a little bit.
No comment, right?
Yeah. Just going back on the other, on the other hearing, I'll make a motion that we authorize William Cattigan to sign on behalf of the board, the, the, um. The decision for C and J Realty Trust.
Thank you.
For a special permit.
Second.
I thought it was too late to say that.
Oh, no.
We haven't closed the.
We haven't closed the hearing, the meeting yet, let's do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a second.
Polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Uh, Vicky.
Yes.
Uh, Sean.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, okay.
Yeah, as long as we take action within the, within the meeting itself to do things.
Good catch, David.
Yeah. Okay.
Alrighty.
Comments.
Be good.
I think so, let's, let's, um. Can you, can you, um, release the screenplay, uh, thank you, Bill. I wanted to look at my, uh, so we got this. That's it for the planning board. Um.
And your bylaw proposal, you, you touched on that already, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, uh, we're gonna have to, uh. Well. I'm gonna have to take a look at some of the, uh, assessors' maps for downtown and see what makes sense.
Is that something, Bill, you wanna push through to March first, or you, or you wanna maybe take a little bit more. Careful approach for the fall?
Uh. Yeah, you know, we could leave it off of this town meeting and, and, um. The planning board could hold the hearing. Uh, on it, if we can get ready by, uh, April eleventh. Or, no, they'd still have to advertise for.
Yeah.
So. I don't know, let me think about it.
I know, if I can comment, I don't think we did it last year, but certainly many times in the years past, we've had a special within the annual.
That's true, yeah.
And I, I, I don't remember if we had one last year, it seems to me we did, but. In fact, no, we did, we had it in, we had it in December, we had a special within a special, didn't we, I don't know.
Yeah.
That becomes a blur after a while.
Really? Uh, all right.
I'll, I'll bid you folks goodnight and I'm gonna head out and you can finish up your business.
John, have a good one.
Night, Charles, thank you.
Goodnight, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Anything else we need to handle, Beth?
No, you look, that looks great, we need to get David home for dinner.
At this point, it's gonna be breakfast. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, um, polling the members, Darlene.
Yes.
Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Vicky.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll vote yes, okay, motion carries.